The first two bullets, the last three I've shared with you before. The first two bullets are here recently. So as we were planning our recruiting fairs this year, we got some information. New Mexico Island's career fair was completely canceled. Didn't have enough kids in the college to host a career fair. So they're encouraging their kids to go to another one. There's one on the front day and the day behind. So they're encouraging them to attend one of those two job fairs. But again, points to the lack of candidates that we're all competing for. The next one, again, just happened. We were sending Raffaela to go to the career fair at Fort Hays State. And we get an email from the organizer saying, you don't have any interviews set up. We're gonna send you a refund. So I'm saying, no, 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 we don't want to do that. So they've set up this career fair. It's all interview based. From the time they start to the time they have 30 minute slots, kids can go in. They can do interviews with all the prospective school districts. So that really is a disadvantage for us because then that cuts into our salesmanship. Us being able to get out and talk to kids because there's no foot traffic. It's just you holding pen, you walk over and you sit down, you do an interview, and you go back to the holding pen. Well, that's what we're utilizing to our advantage is we still went. We still said, we're gonna go and we're gonna do what we can to recruit. So Raffaela went in and she started meeting with those kids while they were sitting waiting for an interview. There was a 45 minute time period where they could try to set up additional interviews. And we were out hustling customers that whole time when they were gonna kick us out. Okay? Another fact about that particular fair, only 20 students signed up for the career fair at Fort Hays State. Half of those were T2T kids. T2T transition to teaching is at Fort Hays State, set up for seven through 12. Some of this shows in a different field, have a bachelor's in a different area, but want to go into teaching. And they have to be sponsored to get a job, to be in this transition program. So 10 of those kids were looking for sponsors, basically. And the other 10 were open to interviews. And that's one of our state schools. So the other three bullets, again, I won't bore you with. But it's just again to show that more and more colleges are seeing the impact of students not choosing education. So just doing the same thing isn't working, the recruiting fair. So we gotta do some things differently. One of those things is that we are looking at alternative licensure programs. And here are several examples. So the transition to teaching program, that's what I just described. It really focuses on seven through 12 level candidates. But we currently have 16 employees who are going through that right now. And so that's been really big for us. And they have to complete after two years. So basically you have someone who has got a lot of knowledge in their content area. Fort Hays State will give them a certification level. Say I was a business manager, I've got a lot of business finance classes. They'll certify me to teach business. And then I go do that. I start right away. But then in the evenings, I'm learning how to be a teacher. I'm getting the pedagogy of that and I have to do that for two years. And we have 16 people. And sometimes that's just our community, people that have chosen a different path and now been called back to teach. And so again, we have a lot of community response there, 16 people participating. The MAT program is a little bit like our transition. It's a new program that started last year, developed by Kansas State University. And instead of focusing on a transition program from seven to 12, it focuses on our elementary, which is over the last several years, has definitely been a need, not only for us, but across the state in terms of filling elementary positions. So this program is designed for anyone with a bachelor's degree and they want to go into teaching. It's a compressed program. And so they take classes for 12 months, which includes student teaching. And when they get done, they'll have a master's degree and their teaching credentials. And again, we have two people doing that. And we have three already that I know about that are scheduled for the next cohort that will start this spring. Our residency program, again, this was designed to try to entice more of our classified folks, people who had an associate's degree, still wanted to work, maintain some income, but get into the teaching profession. And so Fort Hays State designed it. And we had two people take advantage of that. They're now completing their student teaching. And those are the two in that earlier slide that I said we were planning to hire at semester time. Working with Newman University on a grant right now. So again, we're trying to find as many avenues to get people into education as we can. Not just the recruiting fairs, but kind of here at home. What can we do for the people that we have? Maybe it's our classified staff. Maybe it's our substitutes that are just missing some hours. So we're working with Newman right now to, they're writing a grant and we're hopeful that that gets approved. But that would enable us to give these folks some additional hours that will start them on their pathway to becoming teachers. And then the last piece here is just, you know, again, we're out making contact with anybody. Historically, it's been pretty hard to find a social studies position and a PE position. So we have lots of candidates, not too many jobs. But we're taking all of those, even though we might not have positions in those areas. And we're trying to encourage and we're gonna repurpose those people in different areas. One gentleman we did that with this year, he is now becoming a special education teacher. One PE teacher is teaching some science classes for us, some body systems classes for us at the high school. And he was a PE degree person. So we're gonna continue to do those kinds of things. Another thing that we're doing a little bit outside the box, our employee incentive program. This is at no cost to the district. It's funded by the Heritage Edge Suites and the Perrin Cove Water Park. And this has been great. But we really are trying to encourage our staff to help with this issue. And by doing so, then they're gonna get a little money in their pocket. So how that works is we're not above stealing teachers, okay? So any of our staff members, they can entice someone to come and work for Garden City. They sign a letter of intent, put them under contract. That candidate would get a $500 signing bonus. But the employee, as long as that person put their name on their application, that they were referred by Keith Hogan, then that person's gonna get $500 as well. And that's based on the generosity from our community and the support from our community. So we have 20 available per year and we had nine staff members take advantage of that last year. So again, we're still trying to, you know, get the word out and get people to help with that issue. Student teaching incentive, again, first year that we've done it, and I think it's been a huge success. $6,000 to be able to student teach in Garden City. In exchange for that money, then they're gonna give us two years of service. Again, you know, we're gonna have the hooks in them by that point, then they're gonna make this their career. We have nine take advantage in the fall semester, seven more this spring. I've talked to several universities and we have 10 plus people right now interested in doing it for the next fall. So this isn't our long-term solution, but it certainly is a short-term solution that's really paid dividends so far. So thanks to the board for the support of that. We're gonna continue to promote that lots of different ways. You know, our board faculty meetings, we've shared that out several different times. People that are working here, they may have kids or they know of a friend who has kids who are maybe choosing education and we want to draw them to Garden City. So we're gonna continue to promote that. We're also expanding conversations with University of Nebraska-Karney and Emporia State. And so that we're getting the word out to them too. So that's been really good. Grow Your Own program, this is maybe something that we're looking at for our long-term solution. So typically there are three things that we see for staff members that are leaving. So geography could be one. Well, Kansas living isn't for them. Also geography is now if you hire this Michigan person, they're 14 hours away from their family. And lastly is that they're following a spouse. And so by developing a Grow Your Own program, we feel like we've combated two of those three reasons. Because Southwestern Kansas kids know Garden City, their families are here. And so our goal is to have 15 kids go through that program at the high school that focuses on early childhood development. And then that will lead them into an associate's degree, maybe at the college, junior college, and then on to a four-year university. This also focuses on some students who may not want to go to college. They don't want to go experience that college life on campus. And there's some online versions, things like that. We can keep them at home. We can provide them with a job here, maybe as a classified person while they were going so they can offset some tuition expenses while they're earning money and going back to get their school. And, but it's also not limited to that. So if a kid wants to go off and they want to experience campus life, they can do that. But again, we're gonna entice them to come back and talk to us about what opportunities we have. Garden City Community College has been great as a partner. They're very open to what we're doing through the high school, how that feeds into their program. They've offered some scholarship money for students who are choosing teaching as a pathway while they're in high school. So that's been excellent. We're gonna continue to have conversations with them to make that a great program. We probably have 12 on our list. I'm meeting with these people individually and their parents. So if any of the students have talked to high school counselors and shown any interest in education whatsoever, they've sent me their names. And then I'm setting up kind of personal contact with their families, running them into my office and sharing what opportunities that we've had. And so far we've met with four. We have one hired in the district as a para right now. And there's a potential we'll have two more for next fall. Okay, other pieces of the puzzle. Staff detention, we've talked about that. Increase the utilization of social media. That's something that's not my forte, but we're gonna look to see how we can utilize that with recruiting. What does it mean? Do we just have a page in the personnel page? Or do we use the young people that are going out and doing this and make contact with a wide variety of people? So we'll explore that. Additional advertising might be something that we're doing in the future. And then we're monitoring the building staff needs. So I've started already working with principals, looking at our projected numbers for each of the buildings to make sure that we have the right positions for each building that they're gonna need as we're starting into this hiring season. Okay, just to recap, the district works harder on recruiting now than they ever have. This used to be a function of the HR office. So back when we were going to six states, 17 fairs, that was primarily done by the person in the HR office and maybe a few administrators. Now, this is a community issue. So again, we've talked about the employee incentive piece that we have. Getting our people here to Garden City, letting them see the supports, our area churches, what they do for our new teachers. You know, we're asking people to consider those transition programs that we have. If you've got a bachelor's and would consider teaching. This is bigger than just HR. This is expanding to teachers, administrators, the community. And so, you know, we are in a crisis situation and we're calling for as much help as we can get. We're gonna continue to increase the number of fairs we go to. Again, we started six states, 17 fairs. We're up to 16 states and 44 fairs. We're gonna increase the number of teachers that are attending our fairs. Utilization of alternative programs, that's all those that I described. Employee incentive program, student teaching incentive, the Grow Your Own piece, not only at the high school, but providing opportunities for other within the teaching field, as an example with our classified staff. And then focusing on our staff that we have here and what can we do to improve the job satisfaction. Our district has a history of overcoming challenges. We have definitely a challenge in front of us. But I hope that I've demonstrated all the steps that we've taken to overcome this, too. Questions? Yes, ma'am.
In talking about Saker Intention, I know you have your committee and your survey. Have you commented further on you gotten on that project?
We're just in the beginning stages. So they've just finished their focus groups and we're analyzing that data now.
Another quick question. You talk a lot about the recruiting and how you get to that point of it. But the process of when you actually offer the job or how are principals involved in that? And what, how much dead time is in there? Because I worry about us, like you said, getting them out here and traveling here, but also the ones that are in-state and making sure we offer those teachers jobs before they're picked up by other schools in the area or in the state. How is, how do you keep them that?
It's a fast process. So once they get here, then they, it's not really an interview. It's more just scheduling so they can go out and see the buildings and doing the tours. And depending on how many open positions you have, what they're qualified for, that kind of dictates the number of buildings they go to. And then when they're done with that, then we'll have all their job offers by the end of the day and I offer on the spot.
So that goes through to you and then to the teachers, the principals, don't you?
Principals make all the offers. So yeah, so I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I asked it kind of backwards.
So, so we know we have a candidate, we've done Skype.
Right.
Principals are involved in that. They're all around the table and they're doing the Skype and they make the call. We want this person to come out. So then we'll start making arrangements for that person to get here. In the meantime, we've got to make sure their application is completed, make sure all the references are in. So before they get here, I've already checked all of those things to make sure that that's a viable candidate. So that's all good to go by the end of the tours. Then they'll give me all the offers. This principal does, this one doesn't, these two do. And then we'll sit down and we'll have that conversation with the candidate right then. Other questions?
I do have a question. In terms of the broader issue of why more students aren't going into education as opposed to some of the other field, is there any information on, are the STEM subjects drawing off students? Or what is, I would assume the number of students at the college level is somewhat stable percentage wise, but where are they going if they're not going into education? Because that used to be a very attractive option for people.
Well, I don't have any research to back this up. So this is strictly my opinion. But I think, I think a lot of it is there's multiple factors. You know, like we said earlier, some of it could be the view of the profession. But some of it could be that now the cost of higher education is continuing to rise. So if you have a four-year university and it's $20,000 a year, if you don't have any other support, you might have an $80,000 debt or more when you leave. And we're gonna put them in a job that's probably $40,000. In addition to that, if you think about those STEM areas and you might have someone who is a math major, they have to be a math major, basically, to teach in our secondary levels in mathematics. They can go make a lot more money in the math field somewhere else than they can teaching. And that's a change from the requirements and the licensure that we've had over the years. So there's a lot of different requirements and I think that impacts our students, or our candidates also.
With our licensure requirements, it comes so strange that we've discouraged students from entering the field? Or I know over time I've seen Kansas has gotten tighter to get into teaching sort of that. And I just wonder, there must be more factors because I don't see what more we could do. I think you're doing a great job trying to recruit, but there are other factors in play that are not, we don't have control over.
Right.
That are affecting what happens in our district.
Sure. Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, I think our, I think our license, again, you have lots of factors. You have the universities who want their programs to look exactly like they did 30 years ago. But that's not meeting the needs of our kids, our candidates that are going into the field. So, you know, we are working with lots of different stakeholders to try to bring some light to that in terms of the licensure, the requirements that it takes to get through the university. Why does it have to look exactly like it did when I went through? We have a para who's been working with kids, teaching every day. Why can't we use some of that experience to move them into credentialing them? And so there's lots of people working on it. There's lots of talk about the licensure aspect of it. But again, there's probably more mitigating factors that I don't know.
Because I, when I looked at teaching in the past, people don't go into teaching to make their first million. They go into it because they're really dedicated and they want to make a difference in people's lives. And I think when we look at our district, we're a great district for making a difference. We have a lot of factors that can be attractive to people with that point of view. So somehow we're not, we're not seeing those people that have a higher interest in what they want to learn in their career than just being one of them.
Yeah, it's a coin, for sure.
Well, I guess that's why also I hope that we get to see the results of your thing. Because I'm curious about that too, really. And, you know, this whole issue of looking at interventionists and coaches and different things. You know, I'm curious, why is it more, what is the advantage of not being a classroom teacher versus the classroom teacher? Because I'm starting to get this feel that it's not, it's not ideal to be in a classroom anymore. And I would love to know, like, why is that? Like, what are the restrictions? What are, what is the demand so that your people are wanting to do that? You know, I'm hoping that some of the information that you get from your survey gives us a snapshot, how teachers are feeling being in a classroom. Because I don't know, I'm just, with everything that's going down, that's, I'm just so curious as to what is it that is really causing this extreme national crisis that also even here? When I, when we're talking about these programs and talking about, you know, people who went to school to be a teacher, but they don't want to be a classroom teacher. I mean, I'm just curious, why?
Well, the demand of teaching is, I mean, it is very demanding and growing so.
But it's not changed, right? It's always been a demanding profession.
Oh, I think it's changed. Yes, it's changed.
And obviously not in the better. So like, how, right? I mean, how do we combat that?
Well, you have, you have national issues and national expectations and state expectations. I mean, you're seeing, you're seeing a lot of that in terms of, you know, even just look at our, look at our tests. You know, and we're changing the assessment that we've looked at. I think Dr. Carlin and Liana talked about this a little bit. You know, we got really good when we had the old state assessment. We got really good. But there was a lot of accountability there. I mean, I remember being a building principal and having the trend line and this was the magic spot and this was where we were driving from. And it was that, it was driven. And there's a lot of demand on teachers, certainly. So that's, I think it's changed over the years.
Yeah, I didn't mean to say I didn't realize it had changed. But I just mean, like, how do we combat that? How do we, like, is there a way, I guess, to, you know, prove that for the teachers here? I'm just curious to see what teachers say on your survey and just compare it to school.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be interesting. And that's, I mean, that's kind of the fun thing about that, it's wide open, so. Other questions?
Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks for that, Julie.
So Charlie Spillions here next to talk with us about a proposal in transportation.
Hello. Good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and keep the evening's theme going of change. It seems to be the theme of the evening, so I'll go ahead and continue with that. I did not put together a PowerPoint or anything like that. I figured you were all educated people and you can read exactly what I put out in the board notes for you. So just a little background on it. When I started the position last year, Dr. Carlin kind of gave me a task and said, "Go into the position and see what you can find to change and then get back with me and see if anything needs to do, you know, what kind of efficiencies can you do with it?" And I'll be honest with you, everything that I've put together here tonight, I got really excited about it and I stole from Wichita, I'll be honest. I went to a transportation gathering in October, the first year I was on the, in the position, and watched what Wichita did, looked at their breakdown of how they transport to the schools. Got really excited, came back and immediately went to Dr. Carlin and he just kind of, you know, pumped the brakes a little bit and calmed down. But I told him that I had spent pretty much the first two months of the position kind of pulling my hair out because I am, I'm all about efficiencies and doing things on time and getting things on time. And, you know, we weren't picking kids up on time after school. Kids were standing out waiting. One of the things that I did change from when I first started was we seemed to be picking up every kid out the farthest place we could find them, bringing them all in and then having them move off to another bus and then transferring that bus. And then that kid was driving all around town. They were making three different transfers. I know K, I was at KH for two years. And I was watching little kids go from one bus to another bus. And then some more kids would come in and go to that bus. And I questioned that and wondered why we were doing that because the kids seemed to be on the bus for a long time. You know, we were picking kids up that started school at 8:30, but they were transferring off to a bus at KH at 7:30. So I didn't see the need to pick up those students. So one of the things that I did was do away with that and we just went to school-based busing. That worked, but again, with our staggered start times and nothing was really standardized. We tried to get all the kids to the schools by the breakfast, by the start of their breakfast. So we had anybody starting breakfast anywhere from 7 o'clock to 8:15. And it just fell all the way in there. And trying to get all the students we need to with, to and from the, or to the schools by breakfast time with 33 bus drivers just really, really did not work. This year with the number of forceouts that we have, we've even increased our routes. Again, still the same 33 drivers. And I've actually got 35 now. I have two mechanics that run routes early in the morning. Actually a bus washer and a mechanic. But they run routes, morning and afternoon. So I'm taking them away from their duty, that they could be in the shop working on that a little bit. But it's the overflow we need to get those kids to and from school on time. And it's a necessary thing. So again, we started that situation last year. I started looking at different things and I brought up the proposal. Dr. Carlin had me work with some administrators on the proposal. They were good about it. Mr. Cruz, I did, my first general proposal that I put together, I did have the secondary students going first or later in the afternoon or later in the day, getting out later in the afternoon. That was met with some issues, basically like Mr. Norby said earlier. Those kids getting out later, they're gonna be out of school a lot longer than what they normally would be. So we didn't, we didn't think that was a very good proposal. So we went through a number of versions of this last year where the secondary schools were going second, the elementary schools were going first. Then we flipped it. The elementaries were going second and the secondary schools first. And are the intermediate schools a secondary school or are they an elementary school? We had them with the secondary schools, but no, we really like to go with the elementary schools. Sure, no problem, we got it. We can, we're nothing but flexible at transportation. So we got them in there with the elementaries. So we have put together, you know, now we've got it to the point where all of the principals that I've had working on this, they've gotten together, they've all agreed. I'm making Garfield happier than they have been this year. Based on what we've decided for next year, I've actually made TEP and the Alternative Center a little bit happy with their start time and end time as well. So again, it wasn't, my goal was not to make everyone happy and I knew I was not going to make everyone happy. But we've got it down to just as good as we could probably get it. What we would end up doing is we'd go from the 105 routes that we run every morning now to about 75 routes, which is going to be much more efficient for us. And one of the things, and again, the school start times, we would begin breakfast at 7 o'clock at the secondary schools, but school would not start until 7:50. And again, that was kind of a compromise with the high school based on their zero hour. If they started in school at 7, they could have that 7:50 time and that way they'd still get that zero hour in. And again, the GCA LC breakfast, they've got their setup, they've got their time ready to go. So everything worked in. School would end at 3 o'clock for the secondary schools and that would be the Alternative Center, both middle schools and the high school. And then the elementary and intermediate schools, we could get all the students there by 7:50. And now I'm kind of hearing from some of the schools, well, you know, if you could make it 8 o'clock, that would be good. Done, we can have you, we'll have you there by 8. And mostly those were the country schools. Plymouth has already contacted me about that and I'm waiting for Jenny Barker to do the same. But I told him, hey, you're gonna let us have an hour to get your kids to school? No problem, we can do that. We'll get that done. But school would start for the intermediate and the elementaries at 8:30, they would be done at 3:50. A TE breakfast, TEP breakfast would start at about the same time and that would give them the same sort, or the same timeframe for their day. Garfield is going to be 8:20 to 11:00. Garfield is going to be eight-twenty to eleven-twenty and they would go from noon to three. I would be able to put, right now I have four buses in the afternoon, about, actually four and a half buses in the afternoon that pick up over a hundred students from Garfield. So, my buses are crammed with Garfield students. They're not crammed, but when you put twenty-eight, three and four-year-olds on a bus, it's pretty, pretty tough. And the, and the drivers come back going... So, that would, that would avoid that. We could, we could double the number of buses that we have for those afternoon sessions. So, it, it would make us more efficient, it would make it more effective. The students would not be on the buses as long. We could shorten those Garfield routes. So, again, those kids could be on the bus for about fifteen minutes instead of sometimes fifty minutes.
Will it be that way up to the higher levels too or?
Yes, yes. And it, and it depends on the routes. I mean, we have routes that are, they go straight from the high school over to Buffalo Jones and drop a large number of kids. That's, that's a ten-minute route. That, that's pretty easy. But then we have those that they need to go out a little farther and they make multiple stops along the way. But again, we've, we've run the numbers and done the computer programs. Debbie Zimmerman, huge help, can't, can't do much without her on, in terms of that. But we put in the parameters of everything. Here's the maximum number of students, here's the maximum time we would like on the routes. And we have everything worked down to, right now, I, I'm going to say it's probably about sixty-five routes, but I'm going to add ten just in case some, some things can happen, which they usually do.
So, with that, are you busing the same number of students or are you having to cut?
We will still bus the same number of students. No one will get cut from, from transportation. And on the back, we listed some of the pros and cons of that. You know, the pros, again, a lot of them at the, at the top were, were very much for transportation only. Again, the effectiveness of the, of the department, that's what I strive for, making sure that we get kids to and from school on time or in a timely manner. One of the things, and I didn't list it as a con, but it very well, very well could be. One of the things that we are going to do is, we, I mean, we cover nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight square miles, I believe, is what the, what the... Nine-twenty-eight, um, nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight square miles, we're not going to get those kids that are on the far reaches of the county. When, we've got some that are at the Scott County line, the Haskell County line. We're not going to get them there in that timely manner. They're going to have to be on a bus for a little while, we, we can't help that. But what we can do in terms of the country routes, what we're going to do is we're going to go out and pick up those secondary students first and then we'll go back out and get the elementary students. One of the pros of that is, you'd be amazed at how many times you, I get phone calls from parents in the Plymell and Jenny Barker area, asking, "Can you do something about the upper-class students that are on the bus?" One of my bus drivers comes in from Pierceville every morning. He has a range of kindergarten through seniors. And he will say, you know, some of the conversations that the seniors have, not really appropriate for what the kindergarteners need to be hearing. So, that's one thing that we will do, we'll get them off of the bus together so that the elementary students are on the bus by themselves, which will hopefully alleviate some of those issues. But, yeah, it's, it's a fun conversation with parents saying, "Well, you know, my, my child just learned a wonderful word today and I, I don't know where they got it from." I, I don't know either, I'm sorry. We can watch the video of it and I can find out what student, oh, I know what student did it. Okay, okay, we'll, we'll take care of that.
But do we still need the same number of buses?
We will still use the same buses. We've, we've based everything on thirty-three, which we can handle. Hopefully, I don't have, and I'm, I'm in the position that Mr. Hogan is in, finding bus drivers is tough. I've been talking with Ms. Knoll about the incentive program as well for trying to, to get bus drivers hired and to stay on with us. But it, it's tough. And right now, we are, we are at, we currently have thirty-three drivers, thirty-four drivers, and we have three substitutes, which is tough to keep them. And what I, I know, I know for a fact, one of my bus drivers will be leaving next year. He's going off to college. And he put off going to college this year to stay and help us out in a tough time, so...
You want to be a teacher?
I've, I've been talking about it. I've, I've been talking to him about he would be a good one.
Instead of a kid.
Now you have to find him a bus driver.
No, do I get the five hundred dollar bonus if he comes by? I don't know, for anyone. But I will, you know, I, I know that I will be looking at a, at a shortage there as well. And the, the subs that we do have, they normally go right into those routes. So, what I'll be doing again is I'll be looking for substitute drivers again next year. But in terms of all the routes that we need, we will have them covered.
I do have a question. Is there a reason why the elementary and intermediate schools have a ten-minute lunch or school day?
Lunch.
Lunch. Is it a lunch or a... Recession.
Recession.
Are we adding lunch on?
The, the elementary's...
The secondary is just the highest one?
And the middle schools.
And the middle school.
Yes.
Elementary's have forty minutes, twenty-five minute lunch and a fifteen minute recess. And the secondary's lunch is about thirty minutes, but then factor in lunch and a passing period that goes after lunch. We don't need to count that after lunch, passing period, in their instructional day, by state rules.
That, that's the length of the day you need there for the summer?
Lunch is not considered part of the day.